Hello and welcome to this special session on promoting diversity in economics. My name is Sarah Smith and I'm going to be chairing this session. I'm co-chair of a campaign called Discover Economics, which is part of the RES, which you'll be hearing about later. So the way the session is going to be organised, we're going to hear first from Arun Advani, who's going to present an overview of diversity in economics focusing on academia in the government economic service. And then we have a fantastic panel for you, who are going to be talking about things that are currently going on, initiatives and movements which are trying to promote diversity in economics. So they'll be bringing their personal experiences of what they've done, what problems they see, and also what they're doing to try and promote diversity. Right, so please do submit your questions and we'll have those at the end of Arun's presentation. If there's anything technical that you want to raise with Arun. And then we'll also have the panel session, I think, and hold the questions for the panel members until after they've all spoken. So without further ado, I'll hand over to Arun to talk about the situation in economics at the moment. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much, Sarah. So as I said, this is a session on promoting diversity in economics. So I'll kind of focus on the where are we now to set us up for the rest of the panel discussion. And economists like to think quantitatively about problems. So I think that gives a kind of really obvious motivation for why it's useful for us all to make sure we're on the same page in terms of understanding, you know, what do the data tell us about where we are now? So we can then use that as the first step to start thinking about what solutions might be necessary and how we might address them. I wanted to start with an example from a slightly different context, but I think it's quite related. So this is some work I've been doing with Ellie Ash and David Kai at the University of Zurich and Imam Rasool at UCL. We were thinking there about how much economists study race-related issues in our research. And this chart shows you these kind of black lines showing you what's the share of race-related research in economics, in political science and sociology. We felt like the latter two were quite reasonable disciplines in some sense to compare economics to, but naturally they're not exact perfect matches for what we're like as economists, but they would be interesting as other social sciences. And what you can see as economists about between the year 2000 and the year 2020, looking across the entire number of publications in all journals, it's stored anywhere in JSTOR or a web of science. For all of these three fields, you can see economists, about 1.6% of our research was somehow race-related. For political science, it was about a bit more than twice that, about 4%. And for sociology, much higher than that, around 12%. So on this kind of metric, economists look like we're not doing very well in terms of studying race-related issues. Now, of course, lots of people will then immediately jump in and say, well, you know, we study different topics, we have other issues we're interested in, you know, there are all kinds of compositional effects, lots of things we might worry about. And those are all very reasonable things to think about and all things that we're working on. But I wanted to show you this example today because I think the really striking thing for me when we did this was we also did a survey of academic economists to try to understand how well we knew about what we actually studied already. What you'll see is showing you the 10th, 25th, 50th, 75th and 90th percentages of people's suggestions. We get the kind of the distribution right. We get the idea that sociologists care about this stuff, political scientists a bit less, and economists much less. But we are way out in terms of the ratio between the truth and say the median estimate for economists. We actually aren't too bad at guessing that sociologists spend a lot of time on doing this. And you know, about 60% of economists were above the truth of the sociologists, but 40% were below. Something like 80% were above for political science, about 20% below. For economists, more than 90% of us think we study these issues more than we actually do. So I think it's really, really important that we understand where we actually are right now, because I think quite often we actually think the situation in economics isn't what it actually is. And if we don't understand where we are, it's pretty hard to think seriously about how urgent it is to try and look at different solutions. So with that example out of the way, I want to focus for the rest of this, you know, 15, next 15 minutes on how diverse we are. I should say this is work with Sanket Sen at the University of Essex and Ross Warwick, who's at the IFS. And so we'll be using, for most of what I'll be talking about today, I'll show you using data from the Higher Education Statistics Agency over a kind of six-year period, giving me access to data on all students and all staff at UK universities. And what we'll observe is sex and ethnicity. And so those will be the two predominant dimensions of kind of diversity that I'll think about. I want to add a massive caveat here, there are clearly many dimensions to diversity. We don't currently cover all of them. In some work I'm doing actually with Ross Warwick and a couple of other people from the IFS, we're looking at a few more dimensions of diversity. But just to say, you know, big health warnings that there are lots of dimensions of diversity. And for today, we'll be focusing mostly on sex and ethnicity. I'll talk a bit about private schools as well, but that's really what the focus will be on in terms of what I'll show you today. But I think that will tie nicely into what the other panelists will want to talk about. And what we're interested in looking at is who becomes an economist. So let's start with what's going on. Many of us on this who are watching the session will be at university. So let's start with our academic colleagues. So starting off, looking at academia as a whole across the UK, so not economics, but all of academia in the UK. These little orange spots are showing you the share in the England and Wales population at the last census. Obviously, the latest census results aren't out yet. So the last census, what was the share of the England and Wales population that came from each of these different backgrounds? White is excluded from here just because the scale would kind of be completely blown out if I had a white bar. So this is just showing you all of the other groups. And then it shows you stacked bars showing you the share within academia that are from each of these different backgrounds and then splitting that by male and female. And this is academia as a whole, just to again remind people. So what you can see is that Bangladeshis, people with Bangladeshi heritage, Pakistani heritage, and from various different black backgrounds are all underrepresented at universities relative to their share in the population. Chinese individuals are very overrepresented relative to their share in the population and other groups, the other remaining groups are sort of slightly above or slightly below. The other thing to notice very clearly is that women are underrepresented. You know, if we had equal representation on these dimensions, you should see every bar being exactly at the height of the dot and each bar should be equal parts kind of red and green. So that's academia as a whole. Against that benchmark, which is, you know, already unequal and you can see certain groups that are underrepresented, how does economics fare? So this graph, this straight line at just over 2%, is showing you if all of the different groups in, all the different ethnicities I could show you were equally represented in academia, in economics, as they are in the rest of academia, then every bar I'm about to show you should be at this 2% line. So what we're not doing is comparing to the England and Wales population anymore. We'll now compare to academia as a whole and say, compared to academia, which has its problems, how does economics fare? And compared to academia as a whole, economics, you can see, the biggest and I think most striking thing that you can see here is that, you know, in almost every ethnicity, women are underrepresented. So you can see that the representation of women, you know, is really kind of an issue and is a core issue within economics, that with the exception of people with from Chinese backgrounds, women are underrepresented from all other ethnicities. You can see that actually, if you were looking at overall, all of the different ethnic backgrounds, actually economics doesn't look like it does too bad against the benchmark of academia, although, as I said, academia itself is not very well represented. But one thing that's important to note is that this includes people who are British and people who've come to the UK. And economics is actually very international, certainly compared to other areas of academia in the UK. So if you focus only on individuals from British backgrounds, you see that the representation, the kind of overrepresentation that you saw in that first graph kind of melts away. So you know, on the previous graph, you can see that Bangladeshi individuals particularly are, look very overrepresented compared to their share in academia as a whole. But that's really mainly Bangladeshi individuals from Bangladesh directly, or from other countries, rather than people with Bangladeshi heritage from the UK. So it's important to think about, you know, if we're thinking about what happens to students from the UK, thinking about making their way up through economics, potentially becoming academics, their probability of getting through is not super high. The other thing that's really important is if we're thinking about who produces research, who gets represented at the top of the field in various ways, it really matters whether we're thinking, you know, where these individuals are in terms of which kinds of universities they get into. And so the Russell Group of Universities is not, you know, the be all and end all of life, but is the set of universities where individuals get the most time to focus on research. They're the most prestigious, people who are, say, represented in the RES are typically more likely to be at the top of the RES, typically more likely to be from these universities. So this is showing you now for individuals from Russell Group universities, again, not looking at economics yet, just looking at all academics, what are the shares of all academics that are at Russell Group universities? So you can see that almost 50% of white individuals who are in UK academia are in the Russell Group. And then the shares are slightly higher for mixed and Indian individuals and Chinese individuals. It's lower for Pakistani and Bangladeshi groups, also for people from various black backgrounds. Here, some of these groups have had to be combined, just because the shares are so small, I'm not able to show you them broken down. When, you know, for statistical disclosure reasons, we have to combine them. So this is already showing you that across all of academia, Pakistani and Bangladeshi individuals and black individuals are less likely to be represented at these top, most prestigious universities relative to other groups. When you look in economics specifically, those problems are worse. So you can see that about 40% of all Pakistani and Bangladeshi individuals who are academics are in the Russell Group, but only 30% are among economists. That kind of gap is similar to what you can see among black individuals. And so again, you can see that it's not only that we have to think about what the composition of, well, the ethnic composition of economists is, but also where that representation takes place. If individuals from ethnic minority backgrounds or certain ethnic minority backgrounds are really concentrated mostly in universities where they don't get the same levels of prestige, they're less likely to be represented at the top of the field in terms of positions at the RES, less likely to be represented in terms of the top research that's being produced because they don't have the same time availability for them to focus on research, then that's really going to be important in terms of what we then later see. So that's what we see among academics. And a natural question is, you know, is this going to change? Academia is clearly the, you know, getting to the top of academia is already at least 10-year lag pretty much from when people are starting their undergraduate. So, you know, is this going to all change and are we just seeing things with too much of a lag because at the top of the profession, it's already people who've been around for a while? So when you look at the male-female ratio, the answer is there's really not a lot of hope right now. When you look at this, it's showing you the share of undergraduates who are economists by sex and by ethnicity. So of all undergraduates who are white men, 3% of them go on to be, are studying economics at university. Of all female white undergraduates, less than 1% of them are studying economics. And so that's how you could read all these different sets of bars. And what you can see is in every case, of all undergraduates who are women, they're much more likely for any ethnicity, they're much less likely to be studying economics than similar undergraduates who are men. So you can also see the ethnic gaps across different groups. Actually, white individuals are the least likely to be represented in economics overall, but I'll show you in a moment again, this kind of Russell Group split that will be important. But you can see certainly in terms of sex, there's really not a lot so far that we can say that suggests that we have a very positive situation. So again, the ethnic gaps, as I showed you with academics, the real striking thing is when you start looking at which universities individuals come from or study at. So here what we've done, because it's harder in terms of the scales, what I've done is normalise the share of white individuals to one and so everything is sort of compared to the share of white individuals who end up at in the Russell Group. And so first again, showing you for all subjects in the blue, and you can see that the same groups that were underrepresented before are more likely overall for across all subjects to be underrepresented in the Russell Group. So that's Pakistani, people with Pakistani heritage, people with Bangladeshi heritage, and people from various black backgrounds. When you look in economics, again, you see the same patterns as before. So again, among the same groups that are underrepresented in academia overall, underrepresented in the Russell Group overall, they're worse represented in the Russell Group when they're economists. So if you're thinking about the pipeline of who becomes an academic, that's most likely, I think, to be people who come from, who go to universities where they are kind of studying with people who are working in research or explaining how research is super exciting and how they have a path into a PhD programme, who have PhD programmes potentially locally. And so the fact that we see this underrepresentation means that we're going to continue to struggle to see the situation improving without some kind of intervention to try and improve the situation. And then finally, the other thing that's particularly important in the UK is the importance of private schools. So 7%, as I should say, the red dots are on the right-hand scale, the green bars are on the left-hand scale. So just focus on the red dots for a moment. The red dots are telling you the share of whatever group I'm talking about, so private school boys that go on, that go to university, they're studying economics undergraduate. So 7% of all private school boys who are going to university will be studying economics as an undergraduate. By contrast, less than 1% of state school girls who make it to university will be studying economics. So this is kind of striking difference, even when you look just within boys, because we already saw that the sex difference was large. Among state school boys, only 3% of them are studying economics undergraduate compared to 7% among the private school boys. That's basically mirrored by access to A-level economics. So what you can see in the, on the green bars, which are on the left-hand axis, is the share of undergraduates who had access to, you know, who, sorry, who chose to study A-level economics. And in some other work, we've shown that access is really the, you know, not studying A-level economics is typically driven, in large part, the differences in that are driven by the fact that there's lots of groups that don't have access to A-level. So at state schools, less than half of state schools have access to A-level economics. But that's really what's driving a big part of this difference is even having access to A-level economics and certainly studying A-level economics. And this is important because again, a lot of us who are, a lot of people who are watching this are probably at universities. And we all will say, application time, we don't care about A-level economics, it's not important to have an A-level in economics in order to get into the undergraduate. What we see here is that despite the fact that we don't think it's important for us, we don't think it's necessary and it won't make you a better economist at undergraduate. Students who are thinking about getting into economics, for them, A-level is really the gateway. One in five of them who study A-level economics will go on to study economics at undergraduate. Only one in 150 students who didn't study A-level economics will go on to study economics at undergraduate. So it's really, really striking differences and something that we really do need to think about in terms of what we're doing if we're thinking how we're going to transition students from the undergraduate through to, from A-level through to undergraduate. Because that's really going to be crucial for going to kind of fix this pipeline that we have. And then, you know, one other natural question is, you know, economics is awesome, we're all economists, we all think economics is wonderful, we all think it's a really exciting subject, there's cool stuff you can do with it. Why doesn't everyone just go on and study economics? You know, do we just need to tell them and will that be enough is the only issue information? And, you know, the Discover Economics campaign, which maybe we'll talk about, is really, for the most part, focusing on the information and getting students into it to undergraduate. When they get there, will that fix all their problems? The answer sadly is no. In the work I cited earlier of ours, we go through some of the other issues that I won't focus on today, like attainment gaps. But one that I thought was worth picking up on, given that Felicia will also be speaking shortly, is what job prospects look like for them. And particularly in this case, I should say thank you to the Government Economic Service as the only employer who was willing to get back to us with employment data. Unfortunately, their employment data wasn't super positive in terms of the outcomes that individuals from ethnic minority backgrounds have. I should start with a caveat that the only data we could get was grouping individuals into white or ethnic minority. So despite the various issues we know about grouping all ethnic minorities together and the fact I've shown you huge variation across different ethnic minorities, all I can show you here is white versus non-white effectively, without a breakdown for what ethnic minority background individuals come from. But here, what we're looking at is the probability of success if you apply to the Government Economic Service fast stream, which is sort of the, the super programme that you would love to get on if you were trying to get into economics in the government. And so we normalise everything to one in terms of applications. And then we're looking at what share of people make it through to the next stage, separating out individuals who are white and individuals who are from an ethnic minority. What you can see is that essentially at every single stage of the application process, individuals who are from ethnic minority backgrounds are less likely to make it through. And that's really important because you might think, well, there's some point at which we'll condition out that effect or sort of, there's potentially there's some difference, you might imagine, between individuals from, who are white and people who are ethnic minority individuals. But once you sort of discover whatever that impact is that you think is there, you know, you might say, well, I've already shown you they're less likely to go to Russell Group universities on average. That may not be true in terms of applications here, we don't have that information. But in general, we know that ethnic minority individuals are more likely to have been to non-Russell Group universities. So maybe that's some of the difference. But actually, at all of the stages as we go along, it still is the case that white individuals are more likely to progress than ethnic minority individuals. So there is something that needs to be thought about carefully, about what's going on at all these different stages that leads to these ongoing differences. So what might help things change? The answer is that that's a really complicated question. And so I'm delighted that I'll be handing over to a panel of four people who are much more qualified than me to talk about that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Arun. That was really helpful in setting the scene and revealing some of the areas where there are clear underrepresentations of particular groups. I can't see any specific questions for you, so we'll move on to the panel. And I'm really, as Arun said, it's really exciting to have here a set of people, all of whom are kind of actively engaged in different initiatives to promote diversity. So they're all going to talk for 10 minutes each about, you know, some of their experiences, perhaps some of the underlying causes behind the different levels of representation that Arun has identified, and also things that they're doing to help address the gap. So the first person who's going to speak is Anna, and I wanted her to speak after hearing a talk at a European Central Bank conference about some initiatives from the European Central Bank, where they've really, I think, gone quite a long way towards trying to understand the underrepresentation of women at more senior levels and also actively taking steps to promote women. So Anna, I'll hand over to you first. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. As Sarah said, I am going to talk about the measures that the European Central Bank is, what the European Central Bank is doing to promote diversity, but I will focus on gender. All the results and everything I am going to say today comes from this paper that I co-authored with Laura Spido and Laclevin. And let me set the stage, telling you a bit about the institutional background, which is the European Central Bank. The European Central Bank is the bank of the euro area. It's a major central bank with international workforce of about 3,000 employees from the different EU countries and the UK. And it's an expert-based organisation. Experts join the European Central Bank at different salary bands, depending on the education and work experience. And then how career progression goes is as follows. Salary progression takes place between each salary band. And the salary increase follows performance evaluation. Performance is evaluated every year and then according to this performance, salary increase is granted. But promotions to higher salary bands actually follow a selection campaign. Whenever a vacancy is open, potential candidates have to apply, then may or not be shortlisted, may or not be selected for the process of interviews and even written exercises sometimes. So this is how it works. I will focus my talk on promotions to higher bands. And what I am going to try to answer today is whether they are gender gaps in career progression at the ECB, whether the corporate diversity policies that the ECB has been taking, have managed to mitigate those gaps, and which are the factors that account for these gender gaps. The data we use are personnel data from the records of the ECB, so they are registered data. We have a lot of individual information, but also information about the selection campaigns, information about the vacancies, who applies, who's shortlisted, whether they are or not selected, and whether they are or not successful. And the focus of the talk today is going to be in, I will focus on the, at the expert level, how experts move to more initial level, to a more senior level in fact, which is called from economist and senior economist to principal economist or advisors. And I will look at areas that mostly employ economists, the areas in the ECB that, for example, legal services that employ lawyers. But my sample is very omni-generous, in terms of education and work experience of the individuals. So starting with the promotion gap. The chart I am showing to you here is just calculated from raw data. The dark line is the promotion rate of men minus the promotion rate of women, that's the promotion, the gender promotion gap as time goes. This is five years after entry, 10 years after entry. And for the data before 2011, 10 years after entry, this gap is 36%, quite large. But after 2011, which is the red line, it vanishes, it drops actually by 80%. This point here is 8%. You may already be wondering what happened in 2011, and just as an advance, the diversity policies were in place as of 2010. This, as I say, our raw data, we calculate, we do some regressions and control by individual characteristics of the workers. The change is not that large. The annual probability of promotion of women is about 3% lower than that of men. That means 3% on average gap a year is about 30 after 10 years. So it's very little that individual characteristics have, can explain from this 36% gap. And from 2011, the gap actually becomes insignificant, disappeared. And as I said, the difference, what happens around 2011 is that the ECB made his public statement on diversity, publicly commits to promote diversity with a statement that comes, that goes as follows, the ECB, we believe that diversity creates excellence, and elaborates on this. And there are several facets of diversity in this public commitment, gender, nationality, ethnic origin, et cetera. But this study focuses on gender. And several measures were taken in each one of these different facets. The ones in gender go through targets, diversity creation or diversity ambassadors, women in leadership training, flexible working hours, teleworking, mentoring, and along, etc., that I will summarise as a change in the corporate culture. So at this point, you can think, okay, the ECB did well, is this policy that had an effect? Well done. But actually, this absence of promotion gap after 2011 is masking two other gaps. One is the negative gender application gap and the other is the positive promotion gap after application. And then we are able to study these because we have information on the campaigns, on the campaigns that are opened for promotion. And we have this information from 2012 to 2017, that is the period in which there is not a promotion gap any longer, at least not visible promotion gap. Let's go one by one. The application gap, the application gap, we observe that women apply less than men for promotions. This we observe it in the raw data, we see that they apply later, that they wait to have more qualifications. And we will go and run some regressions. Here, we estimate the probability of applying for promotion with a large number of controls, some of which are listed here. And we see that there is, in fact, a large application gap that goes from 1.4% to 1.8%. This is very large because the average application rate is about 3.8. So this is 40% of the actual average application rate. And when we look at the different factors behind this, a remarkable one that I want to mention is that this application gap in part is explained by gender differences in the response to competitive environments. You see here is a negative application gap that is even more negative when the campaign is external, it's open to people outside of the ECB, there is external competition. And we have also created some indicators of the perceived competition by the individuals, whether, in particular, this one that I am showing here is an index of the percentage of direct colleagues at work that are very high in the salary band. So they are serious competitors. And in this case, also the, the gap increases, women are more reticent to, to apply. And obviously, this negative application gap to result in a, no gap in the promotion have to be coupled with a positive promotion gap after application. And in fact, this is with our data, the last follow in application, the probability of promotion of women at the ECB is larger than the probability of promotion of men, we see here, at the controlling, as I said, for many individual characteristics, that women are more likely to, to be promoted once they have applied. So the, your intuition may be saying, well, this may be due to positive discrimination. Managers and the selection committees have all this pressure of reaching diversity, gender diversity, or promoting it or hiring it women. So this may be indeed positive discrimination of the female candidates. But we find that this is not the case. And I am going, I hope I convince you with this evidence, that is simply that women, when they apply, they are more qualified than men. In fact, if we use as a measure of performance salaries, that as I explained at the beginning, increasing the salaries granted after performance evaluations, then looking at which is the performance in terms of wages of women just after, after being promoted, we see that in general, there is a negative wage gap, women earn less. But after being promoted, there is a positive wage gap, women earn more. And we believe that these wages are a good proxy for, for performance, this is telling simply that women are performing better. Still, scepticals may say, no, this may be part of the same discrimination, positive discrimination process. Still, scepticals may say, no, this may be part of the same discrimination, positive discrimination process. It's all this pressure to favour women at the ECB that even they are granted with higher salary increases. And so we tried to disentangle with it, this is true. And for that, we ran the same regression with the sample before 2011. And after 2011, what was the policies for diversity are in place. And we see that women perform better than the male counterparts. And this was even more the case before 2011, when these policies were not in place. There was no pressure to grant higher salaries or higher promotion to women or more promotion to women. So we can conclude that, in fact, conditionally applied women are more likely to be promoted. But this is not due to discriminations, you know, it's due into the fact that they are very better qualified than the male counterparts. So let me summarise all these findings. I had very quickly gone through them. But basically, can be summarised in three, four points. Gender promotion gap before 2011, gap that disappears after this public commitment to diversity was in place in 2010. But still, women are less likely to apply for promotions, and this is particularly so when they expect high competition. But once they apply, they are more likely to get promoted than men. And this cannot be seen as discrimination, but that merit. I don't think I need to mention this here with this public. But when I presented these papers in several forums, the question was, so, and why is the ECB caring about this? Actually, if they don't apply, it's because they don't want to apply. Even if we don't think of moral reasons to care about this, even if we only think of the ECB as an employer, I think they should care because otherwise it's just a weight and misuse of human capital, right? But let me move on and see what this our takeaway from this, for these findings. These findings point to the effectiveness of corporate diversity policies. At least they worked for the ECB in reducing gender bias in promotion. And in terms of contribution to the literature, if I have time, I would say that this lends support to the multipolic equilibrium view of the representation of women, which is this view. It's a view that there is not fundamentals for this difference, but are the expectation that women would not perform equally well as men that are self-sustained. For example, let me give you an example for that. Alvanesian Olivetti, 2009, in the paper, women are less paid because they are expected to spend more effort on home production vis-à-vis market production. And since this is the expectation, the optimal choice for women is indeed spending less effort in market production, so that this becomes an equilibrium. But this equilibrium may be changed by policy. The policy is kind of the equilibrium selection device, and this is actually what we found at the ECB. And nevertheless, this finding also suggests that supply-side explanations are at play. They still remain relevant. For example, women apply less if they expect competitive environment. The takeaways for the ECB as an institution. There are more policy-oriented takeaways, which can be that. The main takeaway again is that corporate policy and corporate culture mainly make a difference in mitigating this promotion gap. However, more needs to be done, and this, that was our policy advice to the ECB Human Resources Department by lowering the barriers for women to seek for promotion opportunities and also fostering even more inclusive culture. With the new measures that the ECB has been taking, they have been very responsive to the findings in this paper, actually. And there are new measures in place to foster more this inclusive culture, like inclusive training for managers, which is compulsory and is monitored. And recently, like a few weeks ago, they launched these gender scorecards. This is just for transparency and accountability in the internet. We all, and it's very easy to use, in a very easy way, we can find all the information on gender statistics, gender rates by business area, new entrants, different salary bands. And this is at hand for any worker at the ECB. Also, the mentoring programme has been fostered. In fact, I must say that in this empirical research, we found that, okay, it was the whole package of measures that changed the culture and work. But one of the measures that were taking work individually was mentoring. And many other measures in this line. New targets have been set, for example, the target for 2026 for senior management, now it's forty percent. And an interesting target that has been set is not in terms of stocks, but in terms of flows. The new intakes all over the ECB must be fifty percent. Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Anna. Yeah, I think it's a really interesting example of how an institution can really change things if it sort of puts its mind to it. I'm not aware of any other institution that employs a lot of economists doing that. And Felicia might want to pick up what she thinks about that in the G S context. I just have one, there's no questions in the chat as far as I can tell. I have one question for you. So you reduced the gender promotion gap, the ECB reduced the gender promotion gap. Was it by sort of narrowing the application gap or by narrowing the probability of being successful if they applied? I take it the two, the decomposition was all afterwards, so I just wondered whether you looked before and afterwards.
Yeah, we cannot look at it. I cannot be, give you evidence because for the campaigns, we only have information started in 2012.
Okay, okay.
But there is a result that gives us a hint. If you see, the whole story of women being promoted, being more likely to be promoted after application is a self-selection, women wait to be better prepared. I would say that the application gap is likely to be now, to have narrowed because the, I don't know whether I can go back, yes, I can. But in any case, you may remember the results. When we tried to evaluate whether women performed better after promotion, we found that they did perform better, and that was even more the case before 2011, which hints that before 2011, the self-selection out of the applicant's pool was even more stronger. They waited more to be better prepared before applying. So we believe that the application gap has narrowed.
Has narrowed. Okay, thank you very much. So I think we'll move on and hear from Felicia, who is, who works for the Government Economics Service and is also the founder of the Black Economist Network. And as Arun has shown, there's quite a lot of under-representation of black economists. So Felicia, can you tell us what your, what the kind of the role of the Black Economist Network is and what issues you see facing black economists in particular?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Sarah. So for my talk, I'll start off with like why I came to found the Black Economist Network, then talk about some of the issues and why this matters, then the network, and what more some of our members have said that the economics community and different organisations can do. So I'll start over the founding story. So I guess from early on, I've always been intrigued in the ways in which economic theories can be used to tackle some of the most complex economic issues. But it was to my surprise when I found that, you know, in my undergrad, I didn't learn of any prominent figures in economics that looked like me or had a similar background to me that were from, that were either black British or black African. I think we learnt of Arthur Lewis, who was the one black economist we'd come across and the only black economist to win the Nobel Prize. So I initially thought that this was a problem academia. As we see, academia has had an issue, as Aaron has shown. But as I started working, I quickly realised that this was a widespread issue across all sectors when it comes to economics. So in my first role as a government economist, I was the only black female economist in my department alongside another black male economist. We started at the same time, at the same grade in the same team. So there was about, I guess, sixty economists in the whole department, and there was only two of us at the same grade. So this led me to question where all the black economists actually were. Because I know that I had seen them when I was studying in my undergrad, but, you know, I don't see them reflected in the reading list, I don't see them out, represented in leadership positions. So I was a bit confused. And when we are talking about, much of, so I started this network in 2019. And at the time, much of the focus on diversity in economics was centred around gender representation. But often overlooked was the under-representation of black professionals in this space. And being a woman and being of black descent, that was like the intersection of the two. So I was hardly represented at all. And this lack of visibility meant there was literally like no initiatives at the higher levels to address this. I didn't see anything like this. And as we know, economics is not very racially diverse in terms of what we see out there. And a quick Google search of some of the top-held positions in economics organisations, from think tanks to banks, really does show that. But this is important, not from just an equality standpoint, but also from the perspective of policymaking. So as economists, we hold some of the most powerful positions in societies with the abilities to form policies and change lives. But these policy recommendations are dependent on the evidence and analysis underpinning them and whose perspectives are being included. So a lack of attention to issues faced by particular community groups can ultimately lead to poor decision-making policy and negative outcomes for these groups. And it's basically for that reason why I started the Black Economist Network. So the Black Economist Network was launched in November of 2019. And we're basically an organisation dedicated to providing a platform through which professionals and students from the African and Caribbean descent in economics and related fields can connect, collaborate, share ideas and support each other. We also seek to challenge the lack of diversity within economics-related fields by bringing together and raising the profile of black people in economics, amplifying their voices and working alongside different economics organisations just to improve the lack of diversity. So I'm pleased to say that, you know, since 2019, despite the pandemic, we've managed to grow to over three hundred members across the world. We have members in the States, we have members across Europe, as well as the African continent, Caribbean and Australia. And we're made up of about fifty-four percent students and about forty-six percent of professionals, early career to senior. And we've been able to reach a network of over four thousand Twitter followers, one thousand LinkedIn followers and eight hundred, now I believe, Instagram followers. So we're growing as a network. And our key, we have four key aims. So our first aim is actually to connect. So this is to essentially bring together different black economists, to chat, meet up regularly, just to save space so people can feel like they can add their grievances and also meet people that look like them, maybe seek advice, and it can give them that little bit of boost, you know. Then our second aim is to educate. So this is all about equipping current and aspiring professionals, economics professionals on career options and skills needed for career progression. Because I think this is important, especially, you know, coming from an ethnic minority background. A lot of what we see is like, oh, you need to go into certain positions, the high-profile ones, especially like going into banking. So often, the view is that you do economics, you're going into the private sector, you're going to be an investment banker. However, there's so many different roles in the economics area that people should know about. And we will try to raise the profile of. Then our third aim is to inspire. So we really want to just encourage debate on topical economic issues, alternative economic perspectives, and promote an environment where members can learn from each other, but also engage our wider audience as well with what we're doing. So this is, for example, we put on our Black History Month event. We recently had a Women in Economics event, about two, three weeks ago, which will be up on our YouTube if you want to watch it at some time. So feel free to connect with our website to find out more. And our final aim is to influence. Though this is about changing the status quo and working with the economics organisations to challenge the lack of diversity in economics. And so we've had a few key milestones. So we launched in 2019, we've built our membership, we've also hosted a range of mentorship programmes, various collaboration events with different organisations. So at the moment, we're working with Frontier Economics on our Black Heritage Programme. So with Frontier Economics, what we're doing is, this programme allows students who have applied to gain some insight, working with frontier professionals to get some work experience and fully immerse themselves into what frontier is about and hopefully inspire them to explore other career options in economics. And we hope to do this with other organisations too, because it seems to be really positive. We're just starting now, so we'll see how it goes. And yeah, but we can't just, we can't change the economics community alone. And there are various ways in which we would like the economics community to help this situation of diversity. So I actually put this question to our members and asked them, okay, so realistically, if we're thinking about what practical steps the economics community can take in order to increase diversity, what do we think those are? So I've managed to summarise them into four key points, which I'm going to go through now. So one is increased visibility. So visibility of black economists in their work is key. Actively seeking out black economists to speak at events, write articles, comment on a range of economic issues that aren't just race, because black economists aren't just race specialists. They're actually interested in other economics fields. And yeah, and the field needs to amplify the work of black economists so that we can start seeing ourselves and the contributions that we make. Secondly, increased relatability. So this is hosting seminars, events, or even carrying out research that makes economics less foreign and isolating. If the goal of economics is to increase diversity and be inclusive, then the material that the field produces must also be relatable to the experience. So this is basically about, you know, exploring other sides in economics, given different economic examples that might be more relatable to people's lived experiences as well. The third one is increased support. So this is, you know, by donating and providing support. This could be partnering to deliver events, this could be giving workshops and various initiatives like mentorship and training programmes, which are targeted. And finally, increased opportunities in general. So by supporting potential current black economists through the pipeline, such as funding, creating targeted outreach programmes to introduce economics as a viable option to black students or black professionals who wish to enter the field. And this also includes like offering paid opportunities as well, and paid internships especially. And just overall aspiring, inspiring potential black economists to the field. That's what we said in general. But more specifically, we've also been working with the G S and other public sector organisations we've been in contact with. And there are certain steps that we wish that they could take, especially when it comes to policymaking and the analysis underpinning policymaking. So we've categorized this into three parts, which we've made some progress on, but there's still a lot to do. So one is tracking progress. So the BAME categorization isn't useful in efforts to improve our understanding of diversity. And therefore, we've called for better data collection and disaggregation of data. This just allows for better data transparency and allows for people, for us to monitor actual progress. This is particularly important because if we don't have a better disaggregation of data, we don't know who's getting the opportunities, who's being exposed to different roles. And then it just makes it harder to prove the point that we need these initiatives to take place. And then moving on from that, we want to go on to targeted initiatives. So there are various issues across the entire pipeline, from entry to leadership positions. So we want these organisations to work on specific targeted outreach programmes so that are focused on the beginning of the pipeline. But then also develop talent programmes and initiatives to improve progression amongst existing economists within the pipeline. Something that I have noticed is that, once we're in the pipeline, retention is a bit of an issue. And that's usually an issue because even though people at the top of the, of the organisation or maybe senior economists are like, yeah, we really want diversity, we really want to encourage that, they're not the middle management. However, as many of us are in lower grades, we're dealing with middle management and on a day-to-day basis, who aren't giving the same, I guess, vim or the same energy towards the diversity initiatives as we see happening on the top or we see promoted. So this is really important. So the development of talent programmes, as well as better transparency of data, really helps. But then also going into the data analysis side of things. Across some of the public sector organisations, not all, we realise that the treatment of analysis on race, such as in the public sector quality duty, is not approached as a core part of the analysis. So the public sector policies duty is basically looking at a certain policy and doing an assessment of how this will impact different protected characteristics, such as gender, disability, race, et cetera. And it's not a core part of analysis and it's often treated as a tick-box exercise. So it gets pushed aside or sometimes not even done when it should be done. So we really wanna call for coordinated efforts to look into how policy analysis is conducted to ensure that this is no longer the case. So um ultimately, that's what we're doing, that's what we're calling for, and that's who we are as the Black Economists. Um but yeah, thank you.
Wow, thanks very much, Felicia. And congratulations on everything you've achieved so far. That's really, you know, to have started a couple of years ago and to have got to have come so far since then is really impressive. And hopefully you'll be working with some of the organisations um in the R E S, I guess, with Stephanie, the Diversity Champion, also with Maeve, who um is, is uh our campaign manager for Discover Economics. Um so someone spoke a very specific question in the chat. I don't know whether you will know the answer to this, but it does say, is there an immigration status requirement for entry into the G E S? You may not know the answer to that, but if anyone on the panel knows the answer, it'll be you. So I thought I'd just mention that now, so in case.
I think it, I think it depends on the role you're applying for. But I think if you've got, um if you're a British citizen, um it might vary for Commonwealth. Um yeah.
So I mean, it's only in the uh the, the, the Foreign Office, I think, is that right?
No, okay, fair.
Yeah, I mean, so it's really interesting what you're saying, sort of about data and tracking. Um I mean, I think, you know, so the E C B has been very open in its ambitions and very um transparent in terms of allowing people to analyse and publish the analysis of the data. Um you know, I, I really hope that the G E S will sort of do something similar. So and as you say, disaggregate it further because, you know, using this broader BAME categorisation is not very helpful when there's real differences across, across ethnic minority groups. So I think it is really important to push for that data analysis and um you know, sort of eh u- use, use the data to kind of reveal where the issues are and, and hopefully the progress that's been made.
Yeah. Currently, the G E S is going through um a diversity audit, so it'll be interesting to see the outcome of that. So hopefully we get better outcomes.
Brilliant. Well, thanks very much for sharing that. And we might have some more questions later on. Um we have two questions, which I think I'm gonna sort of put to Maeve because they're about um about um bringing younger people into uh into economics. Um so hopefully, these are things that you're gonna talk about, Maeve. So how do we get more diverse students coming into undergraduate programmes? Um do we have to get to school kids early? And then how far, a sort of similar question, how far back down the education do we need to go? All the way to pre-G C S E or even earlier? Um the problem seems so circular. As we know, to attract students, we need diverse staff. So I know that you're going to talk about some of these issues. Um so what is Discover Economics and what are what are you doing? What are you doing to help attract more diverse students?
Well, yeah, hopefully some of the answers, well, I'm, I obviously don't have all the answers to those questions, but we're doing some stuff, so hopefully it'll, it'll come out in, in my talk in general. So yeah, so Discover Economics is a Royal Economic Society campaign to increase diversity in economic students. Um so I'm just gonna talk a bit about what we're doing as a campaign. Um so the main question we're asking is, so everyone's showed the problem um with all the, yeah, that, that female underprivileged, um well, actually, he didn't speak about underprivileged, and that's something that um about that, I mean, low socioeconomic background. And low income students also don't um study, study economics, and which is obviously revealed a bit in the, in the state school and there. But yeah, that's, that's another aspect that doesn't perhaps get talked about as much. And so why don't more female, underprivileged or minority ethnic students study um economics? So that's the question we're trying to answer. And, and we spoke, we focus specifically on fifteen to seventeen year olds. So obviously, diversity in economics is an issue throughout. And we can't solve it all. So we're specifically looking at students who are choosing their A level subjects or choosing their degree subjects. So I'm just gonna spend the next few minutes talking about um the problems that we face, the barriers that are in the way, eh what we're doing to overcome them, and then of course, how, how you guys can help us. So our vision is a world in which economics attracts the brightest and best irrespective of their background and in which potential students see economic, see economists as being people just like them and are excited by the idea of studying econ- economics. So that sounds good to me. So we need to think about what is going on to um stop us from achieving our visions. And there are a few answers to this. And I think probably the most pressing is that people just don't know what economics is. So obviously, young people, but people across the board just don't know what economics is. And secondly, those that have heard of economics often hold many misperceptions about what economists do. And then, of course, there's also a significant lack of women, of working class people, of minor- pay for ma- minority ethnic backgrounds. And, and this leads to these people feeling alienated by the topic and concluding that it, that it isn't for them. So in cap- to encapsulate all of this, we talk about economics as having a di- identity problem. So there's a physical identity problem eh with a large overrepresentation of affluent white males. There's a problem with the perception of what economics is. And so most people obviously equate it with money and banking and finance, and they don't think of it as being able to talk to climate change or coronavirus or inequality or all these really important social issues that, that people really care about. And, and there is also a problem with what, with the perception of what economists do. So they're too often thought of as people who run the economy rather than people with quantitative and analytical skills that can be applied to, to loads of different questions that matter. And a related but separate problem um is that economics is not often talked about, let alone taught at state schools. So there's a real lack of A level economics teachers. So there's no economics P G C E, so the, the, the course that you have to go to to learn to be a teacher, there's no one of them dedicated to economics. And, and teachers who have studied economics, so people who've been at economics undergrads and go on to teach eh are often encouraged to teach maths. So maths teachers get a, a golden hello in the UK, so they get some money for being a maths teacher, which obviously incentivises people with a maths background to go on and teach maths rather than, rather than economics. And so due to this big shortage in A level economics teachers, and a lot of them, a lot of the teachers that there are get sucked into, into private schools. So like Arun was saying, there's a really low and the state schools don't tend to be able to offer A level economics because there's this big lack of economics, A level economics teachers. And this eh perpetuates the problem of only affluent students taking it to degree level. So at Discover Economics, we try and address these problems through, through our three campaign goals. So our first one is we work to communicate what economics is and what economists actually do to fifteen to seventeen year olds from underrepresented groups. Next, we work to amplify the voices of economists and economic students from underrepresented groups in order to provide role models for potential economic students. And then lastly, we're working to increase the availability of A level economics in state schools where it currently isn't taught. And luckily for you guys, you can get involved in, in, in many ways in all of these different goals. So first one, so our first goal, communicating what economics is and what economists actually do. And we do like a lot of the, the usual things, like we have social media platforms, we put on events um online at the minute, obviously events in person when, when that's allowed again. And but the, we, we think that the main, the, the best way to speak to, to communicate with young people is through people who are already communicating with young people. So in order to be able to speak um with young people, we've been setting up different networks of people in different capacities to help us talk directly to young people. So um we've got several acad- eh we've got several champions networks, we've got professional champions, teacher champions and academic champions, and these are all in their infancy at the minute. We've not um we've not been going at this for long, but this is, this is sort of what we're doing at the minute. And I guess the most relevant one for this audience and probably the most important one to me, our campaign aims in general, is, is the academic champions. So we've set up a network of academic champions who are economists within economics departments who are working on outreach and widening participation at their universities. So there's loads of amazing things going da- on up and down the country um in universities with outreach. But the minute universities aren't really talking to each other about the different things that they're doing. So what we're trying to do with um Discover Economics is, is, is bring these people together so that they can um share best practice, share our advice, um support each other and also share resources um and ideas. And we can bring these all together in one place and academic champions can come and, and, and work together to put on the best outreach programmes that they can. And the reason why it's so important for people to do this within universities is because universities have incredible widening participation teams. So if we're trying to reach hard to reach schools, that's what, obviously, widening participation, that's their, their bread and butter. So we as economists who recognise this problem in economics, need to be utilising the widening participation teams at our universities and, and making the most of the relationships that have been built up over the years and trying to um speak directly to these young people from these underrepresented groups in the schools around our universities. So as a, as a shameless bug, um our next meeting of academic champions is on the twenty eighth of April. And it'd be amazing if you wanted to come along to that. And you can get in touch with me loads of different ways. So um my profile's on the conference site, we've got an exhibition stand in the exhibition centre on the conference site. You can our website is discovereconomics.co.uk and get in touch with me through that. My email's on the res website. So do get in touch and come to our meeting on the twenty eighth of April. And the other thing that we're doing, which is a bit of an offshoot of the academic champions, is some of our academic champions have volunteered to help us eh run a pilot programme of um student champions who will be undergraduate students from underrepresented groups in economics going out to schools in their, around their universities and delivering sessions on economics and talking about talking to the current curriculum. So if it's schools that don't have an economics A level um on offer, going into maths classes, classes and talking about economics through a maths lens or eh addressing areas of the maths curriculum with economics, similarly with geography, with politics, with other relevant subjects. And, and we're also talking to careers advisors who obviously speak directly to young people. And, and as I said, like, this perception of economists of all, as all rich white, white men who do money and banking and, and run the economy is pervasive, not just in young people, it goes across the board. So we're talking to careers advisors and teachers about what economics actually is and the sort of careers that can get opened up to people if they, if they do an economics undergraduate degree. So our next goal is lifting the voices of underrepresented groups. And so obviously, um representation in everything that we put out is important, diversity in the panels of our events. We support um our academic champions and other people doing events to ensure that they're um, they're, they're um the, they have a diverse range of people speaking at their events. And, and we also do mini, mini campaigns um through social media. And we're in the, we'll, we'll be doing more of this, I hope. We're in the midst of hiring um a comms officer to help us with um all the, the social media and the newsletter and things like that. So hopefully, we're gonna step our game up a bit with that stuff. But um we had a Black History Month campaign in October, where we had um young black economic students and some professors talking about why economics is important to them, why it's relevant to their interests, and what they're getting out of their degrees and what their hopes are for the future, who their favourite economists are. And and that's, yeah, you can, you can see the videos from that on, on our website. Similarly, we did one for L G B T History Month where we got um economists from the L G B T community talking about why they um, why they loved economics, why it was relevant to their lives and um and why they thought diversity in economics was important. And I just wanna tell you, this one guy called John Fingalton, who's an incredibly inspiring man, and he had such a beautiful thing to say about diversity that I just wanna repeat it here. A lot of people talk about how eh we need diversity of views, so we were able to represent everybody within society. But he was saying that when you have diversity in a room, it enables you to bring your whole self to that meeting and you no longer need to leave part of yourself outside the door, which I just thought was amazing. I wanted to share that with you. And we did a campaign on International Women's Day, talking about why um economics obviously needs women, but why women really need economics and what a rewarding and valuable career it, it, it opens up to you. And we're also um doing a podcast. So we had our pilot with Rachel Griffiths um on International Women's Day, but we'll be showcasing loads of different economists from loads of different backgrounds. And hopefully, this podcast will be listened to by, by careers advisors and by teachers who can, who can sort of burst these perceptions of economists as all this homogenous group of bankers. So um lastly, with the trying to get economics, um A level economics on the, on the curriculum and in more schools, we're working with O C R, who are an exam board who deliver an A level in economics. And, and we're gonna work with them to train up existing teachers to be able to deliver A levels in ec- in economics. And, and the way that you can support with that is that we, yeah, exactly what Felicia was saying, we need like realistic examples and, and, and things that um, and, and economists that are inspiring, but also examples of economics that are inspiring, that it's not just talking to kids about, I don't know, these dry theories, it's talking about real life and how economics applies. So um professionals that have got interesting jobs, interesting research, um doing interesting things, making sure that they can speak to the young people and through that, through, through all these teachers who are gonna be teaching A level economics. And so yeah, that's, that's about it. That'll, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. And, and yeah, please do get in touch if you would like to yeah, support us.
Okay, tha- thanks very much, Maeve. So, so you should say, if people do want to get in touch, I should email you. I don't know. So it's maeve.co.uk is that, that's right. Brilliant. Okay, so we have a bit of a challenge. I mean, I, I mean, I'm happy to answer this as well, but um so the question is, how do we know that getting more people from marginalised groups to study economics is an A priori good outcome for them, not just the economics profession? Might it be better for them to keep prioritising studying what they see as being most relevant to them? Or do we feel we know better what's good for them to study? So I, I don't really feel that that's where Discover Economics coming from. I mean, we're not telling people what to study. I think we're more focused on removing some barriers and creating some opportunities in a world in which very few people know what economics is or have any opportunity to find out what it is. But um and I think also there is evident on, you know, the types of um subjects a lot of people study who, that don't study economics, like psychology or sociology are sort of less well remunerated. So and I think um partly people are studying those because they lack the information or they lack the awareness. And that's really what we're doing. We're addressing a very specific market failure. So in the language of economics, people don't have economics in their choice sets and we're putting it there and they don't have the information to make the choices and we're giving it to them rather than necessarily telling them what they should or should not study. Um but I don't know yet. Sorry, I don't know whether you have, I should have answered that, but I don't know if you have anything else to add. But yeah, I, I, I think, I mean, it was sort of interesting because that was also borne out by the recent UCAS report, which highlighted economics as having specific problems as a subject to choose because it's fixed in terms of many universities requiring specific subjects in order to study economics, not necessarily economics but maths. And also, there's a, there's, there's low levels of understanding around economics and poor careers advice that people get, particularly in state schools. So a lot of people might realise too late that they lack the necessary qualifications to study it. And they may, you know, particularly if they're only taking it for A level, so they don't really understand what it's like or realise that they enjoy it until it's sort of too late to have chosen the things they needed in order to study it. So I do think there's a sort of information problem which um campaigns like Discover are really trying to target. Um so what we've also, um I'm also gonna just raise this because we've sort of crowdsourced this question about the G E S. So I'm just gonna put it out there in case the person who um when was asked the question is still there, maybe I can see the question. So there are strict nationality requirements for G E S, but quite good blind recruitment to help with diversity. Um British citizen, E A, Commonwealth citizen, Swiss national, Turkish national um in individuals must have the right to work in UK, don't offer sponsorship for these vacancies. So I hope that's, I hope that's helpful. We can I have more questions for the panel or for the audience. Um do keep your questions coming. Um and now finally, we're gonna turn to Steffi, who I think for a year has been the first R E S Diversity Champion. So it's absolutely great that the R E S appointed um a diversity champion and absolutely fantastic that Steffi has the role. So you can tell me about what you're doing um and what you'd like other academics to do in terms of promoting diversity.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Eh and thank you, everybody. It has been eh very useful to hear all what you have to say and also have been changing my slides as, as presentations go because I don't need to say this, I don't need to say this thing anymore. So I have, I was appointed actually in September two thousand twenty, so less than a year. Eh it feels a year because that's how, where we are at the moment. But yeah, so in this presentation, I'm gonna tell you a bit of eh what are the plans, perhaps. It's a project for, with the, our eh, the Royal Economic Society and some of the things we are doing already, we are doing now. So of course, I don't have to convince you anymore that eh it matters, like having diversity matters. But perhaps linking it to to this eh last question that Sarah was talking about. We need to attract diversity in economics because it's, it's a circular thing, right? If we have more diversity, people from different, different backgrounds, they come from eh different ideas, different ways to see the world, and therefore they are gonna pose different research questions. We know that economies occupy a very important role in society. And therefore, they occupy very important roles in policymaking, for instance. So in order to address some of the issues that we have, perhaps some of the issues that Felicia was mentioning, we need more eh diverse background that they actually can talk their experience and see how we can change policy. And another reason perhaps that eh so I'm not gonna talk about the economics pipeline because eh sorry, that's what eh Arun talk a lot. But we are going through various crises at the moment, or in, in a way, if economics try to respond to society issues, well, these are the issues that are going through the society. And economies has been heavily criticised for not engaging much with these issues. Eh we have seen that. And so for instance, eh here it is, in the last seven years, I think, since eh the financial crisis, we have seen that every now and then. We have seen that every now and then in the news, we have a criticism to economics. Eh whether economics um is engaging with women or not, whether is eh there is discrimination. A gender discrimination, racists after the Black Lives Matter movement, there was a lot of. Discussion whether economics actually eh engage with racism. Whether there is racism within the discipline as well, and of course, the lack of diversity points at towards that. And that has created a response from our students as well. Now we have students that the students are coming into economics demanding answers for these eh these questions. And we are saying we provide an amazing package of tools to economies. To study very interesting aspects in the society. But then therefore we have, they want to see this reflected in the curriculum that we would teach. And in fact, we have seen that the students are are asking for that as well. So I think for all these reasons, it's really important that we we focus on diversity, not less because of course it's also. Good salary wise, being an economist, we know that eh you get higher salaries eh. So. As a diversity champion of the Royal Economic Society, I have set up some very short term strategies. The short term strategies eh which is my current program is based on the fact that I want to hear more from people. I want to work more with people that has already been working on these issues for much longer perhaps than I have. And I also want to see what they have done eh and what eh how the Royal Economic Society can support that. Before going there, let me just tell you, and perhaps again, this has been already mentioned, but what. What definition of diversity and definition of inclusion I'm using within. Eh my programs and within all my activities. Diversity is not, and I I understand because of how the limitations of the data, sometimes we look at just gender, sometimes we look just ethnicity. But the diversity is very dynamic and multi- multidimensional concept. And therefore, we need to eh look at the specific context when we talk about diversity issues. In economics, for instance, there is a lot of eh lack of diversity, gender eh eh, sorry, lack of eh gender representation. There is eh some ethnic problems raised. But also there is a social and economic status that that's what perhaps Maeve was talking before. So when we look at diversity within economics, we need to look at a broader definition. But diversity is not going to solve our problems in economics. And I think, again, this has already come up in our discussion today. Because if we attract more diverse people, eh different backgrounds. We need to provide an environment that allows these people to achieve. To get good degrees to begin with at university, to get to good positions, to get to professors if they stay in academia, to get to. Eh whatever eh chiefs of economies if they are in the professional world. So we need to create a community that actually empowers everybody. So. In order to create an inclusive community, therefore, we need to embrace the diversity that we are trying to attract. Without doing this, I think, in that case, we're going to be doing a disservice to the people that we are. I'm sorry eh so. Diversity alone will not drive inclusion, we do need new policies for this. So what are the objectives that we have for this academic year? Oh, sorry, for this year, I'm writing, I'm switching. I'm so sorry, there have been nothing in the last two hours, but right now there is a whole thing going on outside my house. Okay, so one thing is to raise awareness because from the conversations that I have had with. Eh few people since September, I've noticed that, well, of course, perhaps Arun, Maeve and Felicia, we are all. Into this discussion and we keep talking about these things. Once we move away away from this bubble. There are things, people think that eh there is a problem, some people think it's a problem, some think, because some people even don't think this is a problem. For stop. And so these are the people that we have to try to integrate into the conversation. Because if we don't do this, it's going to keep just us talking about these issues. And we we are not going to move forward if we keep on this. Eh so raise awareness is going to be one of the key things in the next couple of years. And make diversity and inclusion centric to everything that the Royal Economic Society work. Just eh eh sorry, eh everything that the Royal Economic Society does. This is kind of some of the key things that eh we want to do. Improve our data collection and analysis because as the previous eh especially Arun's, but also Anna's. Eh presentation show is that if we don't have data, it's going to be more difficult to build up evidence to create eh to to do research about this issue. So we are working in improving our data collection analysis. And we are gonna and we are gonna then eventually create a three year program on diversity and inclusion. So I guess my main point in this presentation would be like for all the people who are listening. If you do want to, in the same in the same way just May was saying, if you do want to get eh get engaged, please do contact me. And perhaps we just have a nice conversations over a cup of coffee and a cup of tea. But we can come up together with ideas and how people can collaborate and and work on this. Eh as I said, some of the first steps that we are eh working on already are in improving the data collection. And not just qualitative eh sorry quantitative data. We are aiming to also improve qualitative research in the in this area. Because the quantitative data can tell us a lot about diversity, but perhaps tell us a bit less about inclusion. In order to create how people feel within the discipline or what is the culture of the discipline, we need more work on qualitative research. Eh we are working on this with the Women's Committee and Education Training Committee of the Royal Economic Society. Eh so the other thing that we are trying to do is set up a proper mentoring eh program. In this, we are going to be working with other groups, not just within the Royal Economic Society. But for instance, at the moment, we have conversations with the European LGTVQ group. In order to set up a broad mentoring program. But we want to provide formal training for mentors and we want to mentor senior roles too. So we don't want the mentorship to go only towards people from underrepresented backgrounds. Because it's like, they are not the problem. We want mentors to go to everybody to understand the problem and so address the issues. So that's eh something very important. We are going to be working on a diversity strategy for all the Royal Economic Society events, including the Royal Economic Society annual conference, improve our online presence. And just collaborate more. So just to mention some of the collaborations eh that we have at the moment. So we are already working with the the Women's Committee and especially the work on data is going to be done with them. With the Education and Training Committee, we're going to work a lot on the curriculum. Eh what we teach in economics and what is the culture of our economics degrees. And hopefully soon, we will be able to involve more Royal Economic Society members. Eh we're going to put all all together into the website. In addition, eh we, of course, we are working with Discover Economics and eh hopefully we we get a lot of things done. But something in there with the Academics Network, we also aim to create a diversity network. So hopefully those two things can work together. Eh with the Black Economics Network, we have a in contact now and we are eh planning a session on careers in academia. For eh members of the Black Economics Network in the near future, hopefully before eh the end of the summer. With the European Committee for LGBT, we are working on a mentoring scheme. And also in improving signaling for the job market, for instance. As I say, I don't have results yet, but I can tell you what we are eh trying to put. All this is going to fit together in a long term strategy, perhaps towards the end of this year, we can put a three year program together. Eh but it's going to be fed by all these activities that we have. If you want to know more, there has been either by the Royal Economic Society, so Arun's repressing somewhere around here, but there are. Especially for people, and this is in our aim to create more awareness, some of the things that you can read about. If you feel that you need to know more about these things, there is some literature already there. And some of these are quite engaging and easy to follow. Go back to the pipeline, I do think that the one way or. An important way to improve this pipeline is to improve the culture, it's not just me. There are a lot of people working on this and I really hope to eventually get to work with all these people. In just making economics a much more inclusive and diverse discipline. But I think that's all what eh I have to say, thank you very much, and sorry for my dark noise.
We're very, very inclusive at the ORS, including of pets, clearly. Let me see. Um so I think that was really powerful, actually, the the drawing that um distinction between diversity and inclusion. I mean, I hope that by making economics more diverse, it'll be more inclusive, but I agree that we need to work hard to make it more inclusive. We have a, I mean, we have a sort of question which um I think relates to that. Um so the question says, do we need to think just as much about supporting students from diverse backgrounds? Once they are studying economics as opposed to simply improving representation on entry? I mean, I think the answer would be yes, so perhaps I'll rephrase the question and say, you know, do you have any ideas? As to how to support students from diverse backgrounds, perhaps first to Steffi and then maybe to Felicia or others to contribute.
Yes, eh eh actually, yes, in January like two thousand twenty, we ran a conference. It was a women in economics, it was eh very gender based, but a lot of things came out came out of that conference. And how to support the students once they are eh within the university. Because as I say, it's not important, it's not eh enough to attract more students. But we need to do something when the students are within university, because otherwise we can lose them. And they feel like they don't belong to this place. And economics can feel a very narrow and eh insider eh culture. So there are a few things came out and as I may have mentioned one already, we have to move away from these economies. Just think about money and wearing a black suit and and you know. Eh but something that is very important is to somehow work on how as universities, as Department of Economics. We help students to feel they belong to to this discipline, to their university, to their department. So in a in a way, we need to diversify what is the sense of belonging. Sometimes we have the universities adopt a one way, oh, you are from Warwick if you are T student. But no, if we are attracting a diversity of students, we need to consider how we are engaging with that diversity. And this might mean to eh might mean to have diversity in the sense of belongings of these students. Bringing more eh role models eh that are diverse, but that they also have different experiences to tell. Because sometimes the role models that we bring are face diverse, but experiences are very similar to what everybody else have. So we need to have diversity in experiences and and live. And there were a few other things and perhaps I'll talk a bit more about in a session tomorrow. But happy to share with all the document as well for for this, so happy to share the document if people are interested. So I let other people reply to these.
That's right, there is a session tomorrow on diversity in education, is that right? Yeah, so I think that that would be great for picking up on some of these. Does anyone else want to, I mean, there's a sort of a sort of another question on related. Eh topic of, you know, do do the do the RES or does the panelists have any ideas about the experience of students at university? And you know, I guess we need to not only worry about the composition of students, but also then track through. Their experience, their satisfaction and also their the degrees that they get and their outcomes. And I think there's clearly a lot of work to do in university, some of it at university level, but perhaps some of it. Specifically at economics level to think about the best ways to support students. Does anyone want to comment on that?
Something I didn't, eh I kind of touched on, but didn't show in the kind of numbers, is that we have some data on attainment specifically. And you see that individuals actually from most ethnic minority backgrounds, including the groups that look slightly more overrepresented, still eh have their attainment gaps. So conditional on all of the background characteristics, so you can observe all the things that you know about them. Uh they tend to do less well eh at university, they're less likely to get a two one or less likely to get first eh than eh their white counterparts. And so that is certainly in the ethnic ethnic dimension, that's eh kind of very striking. Um I think that's that's clear on the very quant side, it doesn't help us understand directly in itself eh what are the underlying reasons for that. It's it is, I think, striking that it's not just eh the groups who are generally underrepresented. But it's ethnic minority individuals, including those who aren't underrepresented in the first place. Um so that sort of eh it is striking that it is there the whole way through. We are in some of the work that eh I've been doing with colleagues at IFS. Eh we're interested in doing some qualitative work as well that we're eh planning to undertake shortly, specifically to do that. And I know various other people on this school may want to touch on that, but that that are have been doing eh. Eh work, talking to them, certainly at Discover Economics, eh we have a set of students that we've been talking to as part of the work we've been doing. Um courtesy of eh support from Bank of England, who've linked us up with them. Uh but that's been very helpful for us, again, in understanding eh what are some of the issues that they face eh when making choices. Because I think there's a lot you can learn from numbers, but there's also a lot that you can only understand by really asking questions to people who are facing. Eh the issues to really get a sense for what is it that, what do we know about it and what's their experience look like? What, how can that help us understand what's going on that we see in the numbers?
And those attainment gaps, do you know if they were in economics and other subjects or?
They are worse in economics than others.
Right, because sometimes you want, you know, is this a sort of general Russell Group problem or is it a particular economics? Quite disappointing to hear that it's an economics problem and more to do, we have.
I should say, we don't have anything on satisfaction, so the other part of that question someone asked was about satisfaction. I haven't seen any data that have eh kind of satisfaction scores, obviously students do say how they feel about university and so on in various. So that we ask them as universities to undertake, but I haven't seen any data that we can actually access to allow us to look at that.
That that, yeah, that'd be interesting. Does anyone else want to add anything on sort of improving students' experience and and how to support that?
I think it um eh yeah, going off what Stefania was saying before about um. Make making a more relatable experience and um diversifying reading lists, for example. To include reading um material that actually relates to students' experiences so that they feel that they can engage and relate to. The examples or the um material that they're using to work with. And that's something that's come up a lot when we um discuss things in the Black on Miss Network um discussions. So that's one thing I know students would definitely benefit from, especially from underrepresented backgrounds. And it helps them to better connect the dots of why they may be actually there studying economics as opposed to like long equations. And it's like, oh, where is this going kind of thing, but yeah.
Great, yeah, so hopefully some of these issues will get picked up in the session tomorrow. I mean, there's obviously been some big changes in how economics is taught with the introduction of the core curriculum, which I think tries to make. Economics more engaging, more real world relevant and more data driven um from the start, but obviously there's a long way to go. Um so I don't know if if no one else has any final comments, I think we'll probably end here. And just to say thank you very much to the panel members, I think that was really helpful. And also, you know, hopefully gave you an insight of what's going on and how to get involved and how to work to kind of change things and improve diversity and inclusion. Um I should flag, there's more sessions both on diversity in education and also on eh gender and economics. I think tomorrow, I think two of them clash, so tomorrow at three thirty and also Wednesday at three thirty. There's a good range of special sessions covering eh these and similar issues. And then one final thing to ask is if you could, um I think there's a a survey of your satisfaction with this session. So if you can, that's in, that would be great. And then it'll help the organizers to um see how the overall conference and the different sessions have gone. Um yeah, so I don't know whether I can do a virtual clap or a real clap, but um if I could say thank you very much to all the. Um the panel members and presenters, um and thank you very much for the work you're doing and discussing these issues today, thank you.